Notice hereby given, Willis County Commissioners Court will hold a regular meeting at the county judges' office, Commissioners' courtroom at 576 West Main Street in Ranville, Texas, 78580 on Thursday, July 10th, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. For the purpose of discussing the following items, if during the course of the meeting any discussion or meeting is hidden on the agenda to be had an executive or closed session, Willis County Commissioners Court will convene in such executive or closed session in accordance with Section 551.01 of the Texas Government Code. Should any final decision, final vote, or final action be required in the opinion of the Willis County Commissioners Court with regards to any matter considered in such close for executive meeting or session, then the final decision or final vote should be either in the open meeting covered by the notice upon the reconvening of the public meeting or at a subsequent meeting of the Willis County Commissioners Court upon notice thereof, as the county shall determine. So with this amount of calls, it's ordered, Madam Chief, Deputy Director, could you establish a forum, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Preise One, present. Commissioner Preise Two-
Present.
Commissioner Preise Three-
Present.
Commissioner Preise Four-
Present.
I'm a county judge-
Present.
And you have one.
Thank you. We'll go to line item number three. Please stand with imocation and present.
I'd like to be just satisfied that we are taking over and due to the government for which it stands. Robation under that in this court of the day of justice law.
Please remain standing. Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together today. We ask for your wisdom as we gather. May our decisions be wise, our hearts open to understanding one another. Bless this meeting with clarity, patience, and unity. Now let's take a moment of silence for those life lost in the Kerrville flooding.
Yes, Judge Ross.
Amen. You may be seated. Thank you. Oh. That's how we do that. Okay, so we go to line number four, public comments.
No.
There's not any, so we go to line item number five, approval of claims. Motion by- I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve claims. Can I intercede a second?
Thank you.
Second by Commissioner Alanisa Morano. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We go to line item number six, approval of previous minutes as followed, June 9th, 2025, special meeting, June 12th, 2025, regular meeting, June 26th, 2025, regular meeting, and action required. Can I intercede? Motion to approve. If there's no- Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tijerina. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line item number seven, Texas Lab to provide monthly updates.
Hi, good morning. How are you guys doing today?
Good morning.
I'm back.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning. My name is Yehuda Marukin. I'm from the Southern Tier Area Office, and I'll be presenting on some projects. Feel free to ask me any questions once I, or as I'm going through each project, or if we have anything after. So we have, as you guys know, the two projects on 490, one of them has been completed. The only thing that we're working on is basically closing out the project. The second section, it's already on the last phase. So they're working on some great flex phase. This month, we should be paving, hopefully the weather lets us, by next month. So we'll be working on already kind of closing that project out, hopefully by the end of next month, beginning of September.
So that project goes all the way to?
FM 88?
88, right?
Yes.
Okay.
For 1425, that project has been completed. We're still working on that change order to provide access to the drainage district on that area. So everything else has been completed. It's open to traffic. Everything is good there. I wanted to give you guys an update on 498. I know that road is closed. We're having some issues with people still traveling through there, but the water has recided and it's been able to be access to the contractor. So they're trying to speed it up before another rain comes in so that they can install the rock rip route and fix the erosion and-
You're talking about the bridge, right?
The bridge on 498.
Yeah, I just came from there. It's really a big improvement.
Yes, and the contractor's trying to work fast. They had already brought in the materials, so I got some pictures. It was already, at least the biggest part that was eroded, it's getting handled.
Oh, yeah, I just saw it.
So that one, it's good. Like I said, he was working fast. Hopefully by the end of this month, we might have way more improvement, and then they would be installing some rock rip route on the piles too, so that it doesn't just prevent the erosion, but also protects the pile underneath and all that stuff, so. I think that's all I had. I don't know if you guys have any questions, any other railway maintenance work?
Commissioners, is there any?
No.
No? We're good? Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Always a pleasure to see you guys. Have a good one. Thank you.
We go to line item number eight, and the next five line items or so having to do with spread of the minute. Precinct One, Commissioner Michaela Samorano Alanis has successfully completed four hours of education training, 2025 County Admin Training Emergency Management in Corpus Christi, Texas on June 2nd, 2025. Commissioners, I'm just gonna go into our, well, it's spread of the minutes anyway. Number nine, spread of the minute, precinct one, Commissioner Michaela Samorano Alanis has successfully completed 13 hours of the educational training, 91st Annual South Texas CJCA Conference in Corpus Christi, Texas on June 2nd through the 5th of 2025. Spread of the minutes, Commissioner Precinct Two, Maria Tijerina has successfully completed 13 hours of educational training, 91st Annual South Texas CJCA Conference in Corpus Christi, Texas on June 2nd through the 5th of 2025. Spread of the minutes, precinct two, Commissioner Maria Tijerina has successfully completed four hours of educational training, 2025 County Admin Training Emergency Management in Corpus Christi, Texas on June 2nd, 2025. Spread of the minute, precinct three, Commissioner Henry De La Paz has successfully completed 13 hours of educational training of the 91st Annual South Texas CJCA Conference in Corpus Christi, Texas on June 2nd to the 5th, 2025. Spread of the minute, precinct three, Commissioner Henry De La Paz has successfully completed four hours of educational training, 2025 County Admin Training Emergency Management in Corpus Christi, Texas on June 2nd, 2025. Spread of the minute, Commissioner Precinct Four, Commissioner Ernie Garcia attended the County Judges and Commissioners Association of Texas on June 2nd through the 5th, 2025, Corpus Christi, Texas, has successfully met that 2025 statutory section 81.0025 educational, continuing education requirements for 2025, total hours earned in 2025.
Just to correct that real quick, it was a 17 total hours?
Seventeen.
Supporting documents.
And by the way, Commissioners, I know that you all went early to include the training for emergency management. I think you all went out of your way to do that, and that reflects on the type of Commissioners that you are, where you didn't have to really, but you made it a point to get trained on that. And as you know more than ever, with what happened here recently, Frank is here as an emergency manager coordinator, is that it's good to train for emergencies. So I congratulate you on that. We go to line item number 15, discuss and approve Willis County acquisition of a property easement for TWBB Project 40097 to include purchasing the property easement of 0.20 of Lot 9, Block 9 of the Gulf Coast Irrigation Company Subdivision, Willis County, Texas, and from Willis County CAD, partial number 14354 from Vespur Farms at the cost of $2,000 to be paid from Texas Water Development Board Project 40097. Funds actually required. Commissioner, I think this is yours?
This is part of the project for the Simo Pump Station. We're working on improving the drainage there in the Simo subdivision. And this is just to get part of an easement. So we were here with the engineering, and everything else is in.
Can I intercede?
I saw move to approve it.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? We certainly thank Vespur Farms to-
Absolutely.
To help, for helping and contributing to that project. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line item number 16, consideration action to appoint a voting member to represent Willis County in the Colonial Resident Advisory Committee pursuant to Cameron, Willis County's Colonial Self-Health Center, CSHC 23-0519. Staff recommended Daniel Garcia, resident of Willis County Colonial Sebastian, Texas. Action required, and we have several.
Let me say something real quick. Judge Dyer, this is Cynthia Puntet, and we've been working together for a while with this Colonial Self-Health Center. They have a department in Cameron County, and we actually work in conjunction with Cameron and Willis County since we don't have one of the departments here. And one of the, C-RAC, as they call it, it's the Colonial Residency Advisory Committee, recently one of the members that we had appointed, or prior, had got off the board. We appointed another individual, and then he had another situation come up where he kind of advanced, so we had to name another person, so we're in, you know, we're in there deep a little bit. And we found an individual, well, I'll let Cynthia, you know, speak about him, but he's another Sebastian resident, and he's a really, a really fine individual, and I'll be quiet. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. On behalf of Cameron County, we do manage the Colonial Self-Health Program for both Willis and Cameron Counties. We're asking for your consideration and action today to approve a new member, a C-RAC member for the Colonial program. His name is Daniel Garcia. He is a retired U.S. Postal Service employee, and he's also a Air Force veteran, a U.S. Air Force veteran, and we're asking for your approval today for him to become our new C-RAC member for Willis County. Like Commissioner said, he is a resident of Sebastian.
He's been a lifelong resident there. I've known him for a number of years, and he really wants to cut it out with this. This program has already provided one home in Sebastian-
That's right.
Now, and there's several that should be coming here that are, you know, hopefully will be approved. I don't know yet.
Yes.
That's what Judge Garcia is gonna want.
That's our goal.
But that's our only role is to help find more members. But I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tijerina.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Before, before we go, Celestino, so you work for this firm now?
I work for Equity. We work together.
You do?
Yeah.
Well, I want to recognize you at this time. So I think, you correct me if I'm wrong, you were a member of this, I don't know if it was this committee or another-
I was a senior member, yes.
And then you got hired.
Yes.
And I'll tell you-
Put you in a line.
No, you did a great choice. I mean, you know, Celestino is gonna be a good representative of Willis County, Sebastian, but also he's a great individual.
Absolutely. He's been great. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your input in that, and you know, we had a look at it, and it was best, but yeah, he's doing great now.
I would love to remain as a member of the C-RAC also, but I was unable to, I've been happy to do both.
Yeah, I know.
Look forward to helping all these families out. It's a wonderful program.
Thank you, Celestino. Thank you, Celestino. Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line item number 17, consideration action to authorize Behavioral Health Solutions of South Texas, BHST/CASA, the use of Willis County Courthouse Law for a flag-raising ceremony to honor Willis County veterans, and the River Memorial Library to host a three-day kids' festival activity and resource fair for the community on July 28th through the 30th of 2025. Action required. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Lassie Garcia. I'm one of the Coalition Specialists here at Behavioral Health Solutions. I am working with the CASA Coalition, and we would like to host a three-day event at the River Memorial. So it'll be a collaboration between the CASA Coalition and the River Memorial Library. And this will be a three-day event where we would host educational presentations and activities for the youth ages 7 to 13 at the River Memorial Library, and we would like to spread awareness to mental health and substance misuse in the community. And we would like to host a parade there at the library, and we would like to host a flag racing to honor the veterans of Willis County. And we would like to also do a resource fair, that way the families in the community can also be aware of the resources in their area as well.
Commissioners. Ah, that is great. Yeah. First, thank you for organizing your team, your team every day. When you say three-day event, I'm just curious, is that like a, like a three-day morning event, like, you know, 8:00 to 11:00? Or is it like an all-day, three-day event?
It would be hosted from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on Monday and Tuesday, and on the Wednesday, because of the parade and the resource fair, we are extending it one more hour, so on Wednesday it would be from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
I want to thank you for coming up and presenting. All the supporting documents are under here on the Times and all that. I think it's a great opportunity. I want to, I want to thank Ms. Delma Rodriguez for approaching me about this, and-
Thank you.
It's a great, once I showed everything to the, of course, she came up here and gave us all the flyers and all the information to my admin staff, and of course, I presented it to the judge who were willing to help. I think it's something that we can go forward and do. And Ms. Rosalie, she's not as involved also, which they're local Willis County people. Are you from Willis County?
I am not. I'm from Cameron County.
We just welcome, we welcome you over here, and thank you very much for speaking about this. Thank you, ladies.
Yes, they have been doing a great job at including me and at some of the resources here at Willis County as well, and some of the collaboration partners that they are known to work with.
And CASA stands for Community Advancing Support and Awareness.
Yes.
I move to approve it.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner De La Paz. Then we have the next line item. We'll make some comments on the next one. So if there are not any more discussion or comments, if you have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, and we're looking forward to the event.
Thank you so much.
Line item number 18, discussion action in regards to Behavioral Health Solutions and Community Advancing Support and Awareness. Would like to request authorization of a signed memorandum of understanding from September 1st of 2024 through August 31st of 2025. Action required.
Good afternoon. So we would like to have a memorandum of understanding with Willis County. That way we can further have partnerships with Willis County.
Yes, and I kind of clarified that the dates are correct. We just have to kind of catch it up. I think we changed it from, I guess, to be effective 7:25 to end in August. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
And make sure, just we'll jump on it a little sooner if you want to, to go ahead and get it done.
Okay, and-
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tijerina, second by Commissioner Alanisa Morano. I just want to make a, Rosalie, I know you're involved with this. You're actually spearheading this in Delma. But I want to thank, I want to thank you, Rosalie, and recognize you especially because not only in this endeavor, but in others, your contribution to this community, you've always been an advocate of trying to improve it on what I call the, the end of, the part of a county which is not the fun part, is the part of the individuals that are either in drugs or hooked in drugs or have bad habits, and yet you're always wanting to focus on that end. And you always kind of play the role of behind the scenes. You're not one that want to be recognized, but you're not going to get away with it here. I want to recognize you and your team, you know, obviously Delma and others. Who else is back there?
Mary. Mary.
Mary, thank you for helping. I was talking to Delma for the meeting, if we, how you helped them as well, so thank you for that. And I know that there'll be other programs besides this one that we also will look forward to improving our community as a whole and bring everybody along. Nobody stays behind.
Yes, I'd like to say a word.
Sure.
We have a coalition members that have already planned what they want to do in this community. We had, the school district was part of it. EMS was part of it. We have several other members like the library as well, that we're going to be collaborating with all these resources that we have here that are part of the coalition to try to help us as well. The library has been excellent to kick off this kids' fest. It's their idea, the library, and we're just here to support them to whatever they, you know, because this is a big thing to get out there and get all these speakers, and we're going to have a lot of self-care for the youth as well. EMS is doing a presentation on contacting in case of an emergency, who to contact. Who are the others that we have?
We have EMS, we have CPR, hands-on only CPR presentation. We have the DNA, DNA presentation, which is going to be a really nice presentation where the youth is going to be educated into what DNA is and how we are all very much alike in that way, but also very uniquely different. So it's some way also bringing the community together to understand that we are all in this together. And then we are also going to have a presentation by Family Crisis Center about billing. And we are also going to have a presentation by Behavioral Health Solutions, which is mental health awareness. We will be doing a self-care presentation, and then we will also have an activity as well where the young children will have time to experience grounding by going on a walk around the library and then also do some journaling as well.
So it's going to put a lot of hands-on activities for the youth as well.
Good.
And we also in the process of hiring somebody for the coalition. We need a coalition coordinator, kind of like what I was doing with the other grant that we had, and so we've been looking and looking and interviewing, but the CEO wants to hire somebody from Willis County to do that position, because that's a full-time. Let's at least have part-time. And so if y'all know anyone that is interested, requires a bachelor's, social work, criminal justice, or any of those fields that will work in the community as well.
Oh, great.
But our backbone of our coalition is our members like Delma and Mary, and others that are part of the coalition as well.
Great. I'm sure you'll get filled by someone that will represent Willis County with, with having results as, as a goal.
So I appreciate you all.
As an objective.
Appreciation to all of you all, because this is, we already have Elsie Smith and Pittman that are committed to bring Buster's students over. They have 60 students already.
Wow, that's great.
And then the library is also having a contest, Commissioner.
We have the poster. It's color of world.
Pass it on to you. So Mary's doing an excellent job registering students, passing out the posters, and we're going to have prizes for the winner of the contest. Maybe we can have you all judge.
So they'll be coloring this, right?
Yes, and turning it in.
So y'all would like to join us anytime, just walk in to see the activities that the behavioral health is bringing into our community.
That's great.
May I say something real quick?
Sure.
The poster is from the National Library Association. That's where we got the theme. So it's in conjunction with them, and that's our whole theme. We also meet monthly. We'd like to have you guys come and free food, maybe for lunch. We're very, I'm very excited that we'll take part in this, and thank you all for allowing us to. And we bring this gift to the kids. And we meet the third Wednesday of the month at the American Legion. The American Legion has offered the facility for us to have our meetings there.
Great, great. No, we'll be there.
Thank you.
So for the kids, when we get involved with other schools, who do they contact?
The library, yeah. We have the registration forms there.
And they're handing out the posters so that the student can bring it in, because we have a first schedule, and so they need to do that at home.
Great. It's great to know.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I was going to offer that if you guys need for those couple of days or two, three days, that I've got a couple of tents at the precinct. If you're going to do some activity outside or whatever, I can have the guy set them up, take them down, bathing, you know, if you need some shade.
It would just be on the last day, right?
Yeah, just on the Wednesday.
I can do it on Wednesday, and also if you guys need some ice for the drinks, or we have an ice machine at the precinct, I can have it delivered. Or I can help you, same here with the ice.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank, personally thank Rosalie Luistán and Ms. Delma Rodriguez. She's, Rosalie has always inspired so many people. I've been part of those coalitions and organizations that she has spearheaded with the very first CASA Coalition, then the Tobacco Prevention Coalition, and now she's, they're heading this, this other CASA Coalition that we have. And so she's always had, Ms. Delma Rodriguez is a retired teacher, and so that helps, and that's very powerful. But she was an employee for Behavioral Health Solutions. She retired, but she's still going strong. She's so involved. And so, you know, kudos to her, because, and then she's also involved with VIDA, with different church events, church activities. So, you know, she- Different church events, church activities, so, you know, she's, she's, she's a pillar, you're a pillar of this community. I've always said, I've always respected you and I've always followed you and you've always inspired me, so. You know, there's so many people, so many connections that she has, so many different networks that she does within the community, not just here in Willissey County, but Hidalgo and Cameron County. So we're very fortunate to have Ms. Rosalie Cruzan.
And Commissioner Rodriguez talked about VIDA, we recently got a three million dollar grant for specifically healthcare. So if y'all know anyone, it pays for your books, your tuition, it pays for everything. And that program got us recognized with a pope. So in August of this year, I got to meet with a pope for an hour and a half, the previous pope, Pope Francis. And so he recognized the work as well, so it's good that I get recognized locally as well.
Oh, of course.
But I'm not looking for recognition because it's all for my community.
Yep, yes, yes, thank you for representing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Blessings. Thank you.
So we have a second, we have a motion and a second.
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line item number nineteen, discussion approval of verification county judge's action to approve unforeseen travel for inmate transport for meals for inmates and two deputies paid out of the jail administration inmate transport, line item zero one four six one one thirty-five. Destination, Washington County, action required, Commissioner. This next three line items pertaining to when our local sheriff's office has to go and transport inmates and as requested by the county auditor. We approve it through Commissioner's report in each and every one of those efforts to do that. So with that, can I entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tejera, any more discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries, line number twenty, discussion. And approval verification county judge's action to approve unforeseen travel for inmate transport for meals only for for meals only for inmate deputy and bailiff to be paid out of the jail administration inmate transport. Line item zero one four six one one thirty-five, destination Houston, can I entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tejera, second by Commissioner Alanisa Morano. Any more discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries, line number twenty-one, discussion approval of verification county judge's action to approve unforeseen travel for inmate transport for meal only for inmate deputy and bailiff to be paid out of jail administration inmate transport, line item zero one four six one one thirty-five, destination Austin, Texas. Action required, can I entertain a motion to approve? I have a motion by Commissioner Alanisa Morano, second by Commissioner Tejera, any more discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries, line item number twenty-two, discussion action to approve Willissey County Sheriff's Office staff to receive CPR training from one M Coronal during the week of July fourteenth through the eighteen twenty twenty-five to be paid out of travel training. Account zero one four oh one one fifty, action required. I think, Commissioner, if I look at this one, I think the trainer's coming.
Yes, the trainer will be, will be coming to the sheriff's office, and that way we can get all the jail staff, communications, and deputies re-identified in CPR.
I think, even though there will be an expense here, I think it's a good opportunity for local.
Are they charging per, per head? Per head. Which would be good, I mean, I mean, I don't know, Judge, then going further, maybe bringing to Coronal to do one for the department heads and sports, or guys that are on the road also.
Yeah, I, I totally agree, I totally agree. I, I don't recall, I know the expense is minimal, and just by the mere fact that the image is coming to us, and you know, there's a cost savings there in itself. I know that we're keeping a close eye on the, on that line item.
I like you mentioned that does, because we are going to have to move, make a budget amendment for travel.
Yeah.
As, as it is over. You did?
No more damage.
Okay.
Okay, so move to approve it. I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz, second by Commissioner Alanisa Morano, any more discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries, line number twenty-three, thank you, line number twenty-three, discussion action to approve Archer Business System copier lease for Willissey County District Attorney's office, action required. We have a representative here from Archer. This is one that's coming up, and the magical question is whether it's going up.
Twenty dollars a month.
Going up twenty.
Yeah, which brings up in line with all the other machines, that just happened to be an older lease, but all the new ones are for that. And she said she did have the money for two months, you know, until the new budget comes.
Okay, because I will just approve it. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Tejera, and a second by Commissioner Alanisa Morano, and I know we have Miss Missinga Hosa on the line, is there anything you want to add to it?
No, Judge, I'll, I'll, thank you for that, I'll do a budget amendment, I will submit for that approved, and I'll do that budget amendment next month.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion, a second, any more discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. And all opposed, same sign, motion carries, line number twenty-four, discussion action to approve travel for Anaihna Hosa. One investigator, one advocate, and one evidence staff to attend the Annual Criminal and Civil Law Conference two thousand twenty-five to be hailed to, to be hailed on September twenty-second through the twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five in Round Rock, Texas, action required.
Judge, on this one, it just kind of depends on who might end up going, last year it was just me. It just depends on, on our, on our schedule, so at this point it's very tentative, right now. My advocates have monies out of their account, they get paid for it. My border prostitution people have monies out of their account to get paid for it. The only one that would have to get paid for would be my, my travel. So it's not, it wouldn't be travel for all of those people, paid out of the general fund account, it would just be mine.
Commissioner, can I entertain a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alanisa Morano, second by Commissioner Tejera, any more discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line number twenty-five, permission to board four county roads and to open cut thirteen county roads, increasing to three and four. Action required. Commissioner, but this is, is this is the, the pipeline that's, that's coming across Willissey. This is basically us approving them being able to, to do this. I will tell you that I know the last time that we had a significant size pipe coming across our county roads. We, we looked at the, at the constant expense that, that we would incur, especially on the open cut. I am communicating with Judge Burns in Kennedy County, and we're going to come up with a, with a fee that makes sense. And that way we can justify it one to the other, but at this point in time, Robert's here. I think that we'll be good if we just allow them to, to be able to do that. Obviously, we don't want to stop progress on that effort.
Mr. Judge, prior to the meeting, I've got with Mr. Salinas already, I've got all the information.
Okay.
So it's basically the same thing they've done in the past.
Yes, and they're also following the same route that the pipeline, it'll be right next to it, the forty-two inch one.
I'm good with it. Robert, doesn't it say the same company, right, they're putting the pipe next to each other, so?
It's not the same company, it's, it's Bay, Bayrunner Pipeline.
The other one was part two, if I can interrupt.
Oh, okay.
The other one was part, was down the crossing, so this one's going to be Bay, Bayrunner Pipeline.
And you're with?
I'm with Bayrun, I'm representative of Bayrunner Pipeline.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm one of the permitting agents.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Good, I'm glad you're here.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that, we certainly are not going to in any way oppose you guys coming through here, it's beneficial for the whole region. Just needless to say, we, we want to make sure that, especially the open cut.
Yes.
That you do, and I'm sure Commissioner, you're going to stay on top of it.
I have a made the motion, probably fifth, I move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tejera, second by Commissioner De La Paz, any more discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line item number twenty-six, discussion action to allow county judge to negotiate IGA with US Marshal Service, action required. Commissioners, I've been in communication with the, with the sheriff's office, the chair. And I think it makes sense for us to approach US Marshal Service and make sure that we are getting the, the, for them to be able to run the, the program that we have had on since two thousand and four. And so what, what we're asking, and I'm going to include the chair and myself, that you approve my being able to, to approach them and see what we have won, and improve on that, beginning.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tejera, any more discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line item number twenty-seven, approval of Matthew Report. So, so to approve it, move to approve. I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz, second by Commissioner Garcia, any more discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. And we go to line number twenty-eight, approval of travel request. Kathy, you mentioned that I, I, we have, I, I haven't looked at those numbers, but we're, we're going to be able to swing it?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, you heard the travels request, can I make a motion to, to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alanisa Morano, and second by Commissioner Tejera, any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line item number twenty-nine, approval of treasurers report. We have a rule then?
Yes, sir. There's nothing really out of the ordinary in the treasurers report.
Do you know of reimbursement?
For what?
For the, which bit on the table?
Yours? Yes, it came in yesterday. I need to get with the auditor.
Is that going to be Kathy or? It is not a question, I need to take a motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner De La Paz, second by Commissioner Alanisa Morano, any more discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries, line number thirty, approval of budget amendments.
We have a couple of budget amendments, Judge. The first one is county clerk, she's just moving money from Contract Zone Eagle into the rentals line item for four hundred dollars. We have my department also making changes to operating supplies, office supplies for six hundred dollars, seven hundred dollars. Now, and I'm taking it out of line item three eighty for six hundred dollars, and three eighty-five, which is machinery and equipment over five hundred to seven hundred dollars. Then I have precinct, road and bridge precinct one, they're also making changes to certain line items such as the tax collection fees line item for six, a thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars. Also, operating supplies line item for six hundred dollars, travel and training, a thousand five hundred dollars, and principal and interest, four hundred dollars, and that's coming out of Contract Zone Eagle for a thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars, and the rest from road improvements for two thousand five hundred dollars. Then we have precinct two, road and bridge precinct two, was also funding five thousand dollars for rentals. Two thousand five hundred dollars for machinery and equipment under five hundred. He's, he's increasing his principal equipment lease purchase line item for twenty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. Penalty and interest line item fifty dollars, and interest for his equipment lease purchase of a hundred dollars. And he's increasing road improvements fifteen thousand dollars, and he's taking it all out of line item three eighty-five machinery and equipment over five hundred. And lastly, we have the hotel motel tax, which is increasing by four hundred dollars to advertising line item. And taking it away from travel and training, four hundred dollars. And increasing the bonds twenty dollars, and removing it from Contract Zone Eagle, twenty dollars. She's increasing rental line item for nine hundred and sixty dollars, and removing it from planning and development for nine hundred and sixty dollars. Those are all the departments. Unless you have a question.
I'll move to approve it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tejera to approve, second by Commissioner Alanisa Morano. Any more discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line item number thirty-one, approval of tax collector report. Let me see here. Let me see, thirty-one. Okay, that's it, it looks like we have met the the budget revenue by one hundred forty-seven. And on the delinquent.
We're almost there.
We're almost there.
We still need the quarterly payments for this month, so.
Oh, that's right, so on, on that program, full payment plan. This is the last payment, so that should bring in.
We'll be getting good also on the delinquent this month, also people coming in, paying on delinquent.
Good, good, so we budgeted, Commissioners, two hundred and sixty, and we're two fifty-six, we're only less than four thousand short on the delinquent.
Yeah.
On, on the, on the regular tax base, based on a ninety-three point one nine percent collection rate. We're one hundred forty-seven thousand over. I would tell you at this time that I did get preliminary numbers from the appraisal district. I will tell you at this time that I did get preliminary numbers from the appraisal district, and there's a slight increase in value versus last year. It's not significant, but needless to say, it's more, and not less, so I guess that's.
It's a good.
It's a good, a good thing. So, of course, we have the independent audit to be approved, and it has to do with this number, so. Making that connection here. Scheduled for the end of this month.
Yes, sir.
And so I was kind of waiting for that before we start the budget workshops. So we'll target maybe in a couple of weeks from now. And then what we'll do is we'll look at the revenues, how we're doing to include what you just showed us, but also, as you know, there's a whole array of revenues that we need to look at to see how we're doing in the others. And so we'll start with that, and then we'll work into next year's budget. So with that, if there's no questions or comments pertaining to the tax collector report, can I entertain a motion to approve?
So move.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tejera. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line item number thirty-two, review of special claims. And the special claims is the special claim. Right, and there's no action to be taken on that. The other is the monthly jail count report. The last one I saw was seventy-four or seventy-three.
Seventy-four, you said.
Seventy-four, all right. So we're doing good, and that includes.
March it, bottom mark, aye.
So we're doing okay there. There's no questions or comments on that. We'll go to line number thirty-four, review monthly employee overtime report. I have dissected it as I did last month, but I want to say that we're probably on the same train as we were last month or the month before, I forget, when we went to discussion about it. Then future relative to overtime, I think a future is that there'll be no income tax on overtime. I don't know how that's gonna affect us, but that's down the road. We'll cross the bridge when we get there. So if there's no comments or questions pertaining to that, we go to line number thirty-five, executive session, confer with Commissioner's court legal counsel. And then the other one is deliberate regarding pending contemplated litigation involving the county's employees in this interest, and C, confer with Commissioner's court legal counsel. So Commissioners, as you know, I know we have the Bay Nino Jose on the line, but.
Yes, sir.
I don't think there's anything that we can go into executive session right now. Am I correct?
I don't have anything yet, Judge. I do know there will be something that I do need to put on the agenda for the next meeting just to update and advise Commissioner's court on, but not at this point.
Okay. So having said that, then we go to line item number thirty-six, action relative to executive session, A, B, and C. So can I entertain a motion to take no action on line item number thirty-six? I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tejera. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line number thirty-seven, can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
I will adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Tejera. Can I entertain a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Araniza Morano. All in favor, signify by saying aye. And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Miss Nino Jose.
Yes, sir. Thank you.